Evening, Gene.
Joseph, you out there?
Yeah, just you and me so far.
That's all that counts.
Yeah.
Long as we're on here. How've you been?
Okay. No complaints. Went out and got ten new traps.
Really? Ten new or retro?
Ten new.
If you don't mind me asking, what's a trap cost now?
Buck ten.
No kidding?
Yeah.
Whoa.
And I only got three footers. Fishermen use four footers.
What do they count, three fours and sixes?
Four. Double header with double netting inside, four footers for the commercial guys and they're going to... They're buying them bulk, so I don't know what they're paying.
Yeah, well, even in bulk, I'm sure it's very expensive. So you're paying a hundred, ten, they're paying a hundred. It's a lot of money.
Probably a hundred plus.
Oof.
So much for recreational hobby.
Yeah. I talked to Mahone this morning. He was up at the top of Sunday River.
I think he spends more time away than home.
Well, they've got a nice place up there. Up on Sunday River. It's right on the mountain.
Yeah, Cusack has a place up in the mountains too.
Who does?
Cusack.
Oh, does he? I thought he was in North Conway.
I know it's up on the mountain. I don't know where. Yeah, it's not Conway, on a golf course.
Yeah, Hales location, right. Yeah, he's got a nice spot there.
He's up there more than here.
He is. Yeah, he spends a lot of time up there. And he's involved somehow with Mount Washington Observatory. So he's always there. Working with them on projects. Now, he's got a nice place.
Oh, here's Mark.
Hey, Mark.
Oh, here's Mark.
Hey, Mark. Yeah, so Bill was doing one run after another.
At his age, it's good.
Can you imagine? Yeah, I know that is amazing. And really, of course, he found another guy up here today that was, I think he said he was a Harvard alumni. And they bumped into each other and skied four or five runs.
I don't like how you put that. They bumped into each other and skied four or five runs together.
That ended the runs. Yeah, well, he is a great skier too. They all are. The boys are real good. Ryan doesn't ski, he attacks.
Last time I went skiing, some guy crossed my skis and he went down. I kept going.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, I know. He was going a lot faster. I can't do it anymore. My back won't allow it.
Yeah, I haven't skied in ten years. Just after I stopped pretty much, I skied for two or three years after I had the bout with leukemia. And that was good.
I don't think I've skied in thirty years.
In fact, when I did, it was with Bill.
Seems logical.
Yeah. Well, no, my daughter and granddaughters, they all live up in North Conway and Jackson. And they're all terrific skiers. I'm one of those guys in the blues. No diamonds.
I went down one of those once. Won't do that again. I went down black rather. And it turned out it's the last run of the day and there were like six of us on the trail. And one would go down twenty feet and stop, then the top one would go down past twenty feet below the lower guy. We just kept leapfrogging down the hill.
Yeah. Black diamonds, doubles.
Yeah.
In fact, the top balloon, you come out of the lift and it says Angel Street.
Well, that's poetic.
Well, if you saw the trail, it's straight down.
Yeah, along with my stomach. Got a lot of people on early.
Have we?
Yeah. We're up to eight.
We usually have what, a dozen or more?
If you get twenty, you're having a good meeting. That's only because somebody's there for something.
Let's hope we get twenty.
You should with the seaside variety.
But I can't comment on it until we get into it, but so I won't. What time is it?
I've got twenty-six after. Ooh, we hit ten. This is Josh.
Hey, Josh.
Josh, you're muted. There we go.
You're live.
Hello, everyone.
Hello. The meeting is official. Joe Mellon's on here.
All right, play by plays begin.
Yeah.
Why you always bringing him up in the podcast? Never know.
Hey, everybody.
Hi, Mark.
Hey, Mark.
Hey, how's it going? Hey, Tony.
Well, it's a long, quiet four minutes.
Yes, it is.
Good evening. I'm going to open the Board of Selectmen's meeting on February seventh, two thousand twenty-four, at six thirty. Our members, Bob Colling, Josh Janssen, and Jane Cantley. Joining us is Senator Tony Bobler. We went through the opening comments before I asked you, Josh, if you had anything to say. Presidential primary election, Tuesday, March fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Polls open at Town Hall from seven AM to eight PM for absentee ballot. For early voting information, visit the Town Council page at thehat.org. Annual Town Elections will be held on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Polls open from seven AM to eight PM. Nomination papers are now available at the Town Council office in Dubeck by March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. For a list of open seats, visit the Town Council page at thehat.org. With the parking ban, with the parking ban, hopefully from December twenty-first through March twentieth, from twelve AM to six AM. No vehicles on the street during this time. The Dallas is still parking ban. Visit the Ohio Police Department with the parking sticker. It's the annual report photo contest. The due date is extended to February ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Submit a photo or drawing of your favorite place in the heart and enter the contest. We chose it for the cover of the two thousand twenty-three annual report. Visit thehat.org for contest rules and see our email, kaytaylor@thehat.org. Town Hall will be closed on Monday, February nineteenth, in Observatory, at President's Day. Josh, any opening comments?
Uh, no.
Gene?
No, I have none.
Okay, we'll jump right along then. Tony, you gonna give us an update on the Coast Guard housing?
You're muted, Tony.
Classic mistake, sorry. Tomorrow, Dan, myself, and Wayne Wilson, the building inspector, will be meeting with an appraiser on site, I believe it's tomorrow, to, we've already agreed with a scope of service, but this is, gives them the first, you know, an opportunity to do a site visit there and initiate the appraisal process. As we've talked about in the past, when we, when we eventually go out to sale of the property, the Board of Selectmen have to set a minimum value and we'll, we'll get that minimum value through the appraisal process. Determine, instead of, you know, appraisals, a lot of, a lot of appraisals are, a big factor in those appraisals is comparison sales. And there's not many of similar, similarity to what we're going to be selling. So instead of having all of the lots appraised, we're going to start, we're going to have a lot on Castle Road appraised, a lot on Gardner Road appraised, and a lot on Goddard Drive appraised. And then, you know, the sale of these properties are actually going to create that database of comparables for future values. So tomorrow will be another good step in that, in that direction.
Tony, is that one appraiser or have you entertained having several appraisers?
I spoke to a number of different appraisers. And I wanted to get someone who was familiar with, you know, with the local market. So that's where we ended up on. So that's one appraiser.
And who did we select as an appraiser?
It's Fidelity. Hold on a second. One moment. I'll find it for you.
Yeah, you don't have to. Just find.
Any other comments on the Coast Guard housing? Josh?
No, I know the most common question I get is, when are they going to go on the market and how will they be sold? So I'm sure Tony's going to touch on that, Tony and Dan.
Okay, so it's John Distefano, first Fidelity Appraisals.
Oh, great. Thank you.
So we've talked, I mean, we've talked about the process. We're still, you know, working out the specifics on that. But essentially, the next step is to get appraisals done. The Town of Land Study Committee will then make their final recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. And then the selectmen are in a position to begin the procurement process of selling the properties. We've talked about doing an additional, not required, but preferred procurement to bring a real estate agent in to help the town with marketing and the sale process of these properties. So I'm working with KP Law to develop that procurement document where we'll solicit marketing proposals from real estate agents to help us determine who we might want to bring in to help us with this process. And we have to do that because, you know, the, because of the value of these properties triggers Massachusetts thirty B, Chapter Thirty B procurement law.
That's the question. I'm throwing something out there on that. I know, Dan, are you on there? Are you on there?
Dan's on.
Yeah, just, I know that as an attorney, you're also a broker. Would that, would that in any way benefit us to use your services?
No, no, you know what? It's funny you say that. In Massachusetts, not New Hampshire, in Massachusetts, attorneys are automatically brokers. They just have to go get a signature from the SGC. I've never done that. So I am not technically, I'm not qualified at all to be a broker. But it's funny you mention that. I think that's a, that's a very odd part of Massachusetts law. But no, no, I wouldn't be able to help out in that regard.
Just a, just a, just a question.
No, it's, it's very insightful. I'm surprised you knew that because that's very odd in Massachusetts. So I mean, I think the other element of it is bringing a real estate agent on who has that, you know, network of, of folks that are in the industry locally, understanding of the local market. You know, they're, they'll be able to use their network to help get the word out of this potential opportunity coming forward. And, you know, be able to, be able to, you know, answer phone questions or calls or, or things of that nature that potential prospective buyers might have. So it, I think there's additional benefits to bringing on a local real estate agent, you know, to help us with that element of the process.
I think that's important.
Is there going to be a selection process for that?
Yes.
I just got a comment on that, Tony. So the selection process for that will be a little bit different than what people commonly refer to as a low bid. So it'll be a qualified basis, there'll be selection criteria that will be established. We'll review the broker's proposals. One of them will be, you know, what they charge as a brokered fee. But that won't be the only criteria that the board will use to approve a broker at the end of the day. One of the criteria could be local knowledge, for example. So the broker needs to demonstrate that he or she has a good knowledge of the real estate market in this area. Those types of things. You might want to expand on that, Tony?
No, that's, that's exactly right. I'm working with KP Law to determine exactly, you know, what those qualifications are going to be and how they'll be scored. Usually, it's, it's on a standard scale of highly advantageous, advantageous, and those types of scorings based on responses that we get. And we'll evaluate those proposals to, to make, you know, make sure that it's a fair and equitable process.
It sounds like a good process.
Mark, I don't, Mark, do you have paper in front of your microphone possibly? When you, when you were speaking just then, it kind of sounded a little muffled on our end.
Oh, really? Yeah, how's it sound now? Any better? No?
Yes. Still kind of muffled.
How about now?
I mean, it's, it's audible, but, um...
Yeah, I've been having problems with that lately, so let me try to take it any better now.
Yeah, that helps.
It's better.
Okay.
It sounds like you're sitting away from it.
Okay, go ahead. Hey, go ahead.
Uh, so the next part of that process, uh, would be going through the, uh, thirty B procurement process of putting the properties up for sale. Uh, we have some stipulations in the motion that was approved at town meeting that we have to make sure are included in the process. Um, it very specifically says two offerings of alternating lots over a two-year process. So it's the first, once the first offering goes live, the two-year clock starts ticking. And, uh, we will be, you know, offering them in an alternating lot type process. Um, our, our, in our discussions previously, we talked about, you know, if we were to, for example, and um, just, just, uh, just an example, um, but if we were to split all the, the twelve lots in half and say the first offering would include six and the second offering would include another six, um. You know, would we want to put, say that all six lots are up for sale and bids are due for all six lots on the same date? That's one way to do it, as long as each of those lots are not abutting each other. Um, the, an alternative method which we, which in our previous conversations we seem to prefer would be to say, okay, um, these six lots are going to go up for sale. Lot number one, the bids are going to be due on uh, X date and then two weeks later or any sort of timeframe, lot number three will come up, you know, bids will be due. And then same timeframe, lot number five, you know, will be due. So alternating it in that way, that would still be considered one offering. Uh, we would advertise it appropriately through thirty B, but it would be a staggered bid opening process. Um, so that folks who don't come in as the high bidder on the first, on the first lot, you know, have the ability to adjust and bid again on the second lot. Um, so that's a, that's a preferable method. Um, and then to get a little bit more into the specifics of how that bid opening is going to work. Um, you know, we are, uh, putting an emphasis on transparency and fair and, and, uh, um, and fairness, but also, uh, you know, trying not to, um, air out the financial standings of individuals who potentially bid on the process. So, uh, it'll be a sealed bid, probably a, a two envelope sealed bid process where, um, your qualifications and all your personal information would be in one envelope and your, and your dollar bid would be in a second envelope. And the, and the dollar bids would be opened first and then the high bid would be, you know, then you would look at the, um, envelope that's, you know, attached to that to determine if they meet all the qualifications. Um, so in other words, you know, we're not going to say Josh Antrim bids X amount, Tony Barletta bids Y amount, Gene Canty bids, uh, you know, Z amount. It'll just say amount one and amount two, amount three, and then the high bid, you check who the qualifying bidder is. And the winning bid would be public, um, but the losing, the lose, you know, who submitted the bid, the losing bids would not be. So we're trying to, um, you know, balance being open, fair and transparent with also, you know, not exposing the financial standing of those who don't, you know, win a bid. Is that?
Yeah, that's, that's clear, Tony. Uh, you might have mentioned it, but I'm trying to get my microphone working. Um, so there will be a minimum accepted bid though, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think that. I was just gonna say, I think, you know, the staggered, um, the staggered bids is a good method. Um, gives people a chance that, as you said, Tony, that I, um, don't succeed on the first try to try again. Um, I know certainly locally, there's a lot of interest in these lots and, um, having a real estate company, uh, I think people in town might know this is going on, but, um, outside the town, they wouldn't be. So getting that on, uh, MLS and, um, properly advertised will, will help the town realize the, uh, the highest benefit, um. So it sounds like a good plan. I hope that, um, the real estate companies that, um, bid on this opportunity uh, offer a seriously discounted commission percentage, uh, since they'll be getting, um, you know, at least six listings all at once, all six very similar listings all at once. So, uh, you know, hopefully the town's able to save some money by that method as well.
And the chapter B, uh, chapter thirty B procurement law requires that we publicly notice, uh, when this process is going to occur. Um, and depending on the threshold stipulates what kind of notice that's going to be, likely it's going to be in the newspaper, in the central registrar, um, and on our website, uh, I think fourteen days before it goes live. Um, that's the minimum number of days required by procurement law. That being said, you know, especially for those paying attention to our local, uh, selectman meetings, you know, as a board, uh, you have, uh, been, uh, on the same page that we want to try to, uh, we want to try and hit the spring market of, uh, a housing market. So tentatively, we're hoping to start this process in April. Um, that's our, that's, I think, has been our goal all along. So.
Can you define what start the process means? Does that mean the first lot goes for sale in April? Has a goal of it?
Yeah, sometime in April, we, we're hoping. Now, it's not a definitive timeframe, uh, but that's our goal is to try to be, try to have the first lot up for sale sometime in April. And like I said, it would be a staggered approach, so it would occur over probably a couple of months. Um, so for, for those paying attention locally, um, you know, it's, it's, you know, be prepared that it's, you're kind of getting a, a heads up that it's, it's, it's a few months away now. So, um, but we will, we will, uh, those, we will have to formally publicly advertise that, that opportunity. I think fourteen days in advance of, uh, the first, um, the first opening.
Tony, Tony, what's the, um, the town meeting date? Has that been set yet?
May eighteenth.
May eighteenth. Okay, I've, I've got nothing to add to, to what we just talked about. Uh, I thought Josh made a, a good summary of what needs to get done and, uh, I can see that it's, it's already in, uh, in place.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So that stretches out over, um, three months if you stagger them by, you know, if it's six lots, two weeks apart, that's, you know, roughly three months. So.
Yeah.
Getting into the summer, we start mid-April. So I guess, uh, keeping on that schedule would be, would be really good, people.
And, and when we bring a real estate agent on, they may have a recommendation about when, you know, through their experience about when the right date is to hit, you know, what the target date should be. So, um, you know, they obviously know better than us, uh, on how that market works and what the, what the, uh, trends are seasonally. So, um, but tentatively, our goal is, is to, is to make sure that we capture, you know, the housing market as it starts to pick up again in the spring.
Great.
Yeah.
Sounds like you're on top of it. Um, uh, thank you, Tony. Okay, we're gonna move on to a, we have a hearing on a, um, a liquor license, um, amendment. Uh, uh, Dan, is this a public hearing?
Um, Tony, I talked about this. I think we should err on it being a public meeting, just a public hearing, just to make sure we're covering our bases. It's not a big deal. We open the, open the hearing, have your discussion, invite public comment and then close the hearing. Okay, take whatever vote you have and then close the hearing. So we should just go through.
It wa- it wasn't something that was required to be published in the local newspaper?
It did, and we did, and we did that. Uh, so the, what's, what's coming before you is no change in what will be sold at Seaside Variety. It was an application for the, for a change of the corporate name, a change of the corporate structure, a change of officers and a ch- of directors LLC managers and a change of ownership and stock interest. Um, it, and two of those things, I don't remember which two, uh, require uh, publication in, uh, the local newspaper. And so we did that, um, on, uh, January twenty-third.
Okay, one twenty-three, okay.
Yep.
All right, so, uh, uh, first, I guess we have a, we should have a motion to open a public hearing on this subject. Dan, do you want to, uh, recommend the motion for that? And we can, we can endorse it?
Sure, sure. Um, the motion would be the, I move that the board of selectmen vote to open a hearing regard, a- as acting as a local licensing authority regarding the vote to, regarding the, the application to amend the annual package list license for Seaside Variety Corp. Second. We're so moved.
So very young.
So moved by Josh and seconded by Jane. Okay, um, uh, Josh, if you could, um, read the motion before.
Um, I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the applicant for all alcohol liquor license package store as applied for by George Mestores, Seaside Variety, one forty-one Nahat Road, Nahat, Massachusetts, oh one nine oh eight, for the following amendments. Change of corporate name, change of corporate structure, change of officers, directors, LLC managers, change of ownership and stock interests. All statutory requirements related to the publication and notice were duly complied with, including publication in the Lynn Daily Item, a local newspaper, on January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Notice to all persons deemed by the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission to be affected by the petition was given.
We're second on that, Jane.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, discussion, uh, Tony, before I open this up, um, to the public, uh, for their comments, do you have anything more to say regarding this?
No, I think it's just, it's standard, it's a standard process that as the local licensing authority, we have to go through, uh, go through this process, but there's, there, the Seaside, uh, Variety, you know, is the, their license a- uh, as to what they're allowed to sell, you know, nothing there is changing. It's just on the background side of the, um, corporate name and makeup of the board and things of that nature is what's being changed, um, by our good friend George. Uh, George is still going to be running the store. Um, and, uh, so there's, the, I don't think it's going to look at, lick, look any different than it has been for years.
Uh, that's great, um. Maybe we can remember it on this so that, um, except Democrats, only kids.
Yeah.
But, uh, okay, great. Uh, Jane or Josh, you have anything to add to this before I open it to the public?
No.
No, I have nothing. It's just.
Okay. Okay, so I'll open it to the public because it is a public hearing. If there is anybody that would want to speak in favor of this motion, um, please do so. There's nobody, Tony?
Nobody.
If there's anybody attending that wants to speak in opposition to this, please do so. Nobody, Tony?
All clear.
Okay, uh, so the, uh, we'll end discussion. All in favor?
Gene Canty, aye.
Josh Antrim, aye.
Not coming alive. Okay, um.
The motion to close the, uh, hearing.
Motion's been made to close the hearing, seconded by Jane?
Jane.
Uh, all in favor?
Gene Canty, aye.
Josh Antrim, aye.
Not coming alive. Okay, we have some, um, event request. Uh, Josh, you want to take these?
Sure. I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the following event requests. The Damascus Family YMCA Strive Along the Tide 5K Road Race on Saturday, May eleventh, twenty twenty-four, starting at eleven AM at Veterans Park on Hot Road. And the, uh, the annual swim, spring beach cleanup on Sunday, May nineteenth, starting at, uh, excuse me, nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, starting at eleven AM in the Lowlands Parking Lot.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Uh, just a, just a question, and, and that is why uh, Tudor Beach or Canoe Beach are not included in that. I'm, I'm sure it's a difficulty getting volunteers. Um, but it, it would be all encompassing if we were able to do all four beaches.
Well, they may. I don't know. I think, um, Vi is, uh, Vi on the, um, on, on the call? I think I saw.
Yes, yes. Um, thank you for, um, considering the, the request. What we do is we base it at Lowlands Parking Lot and focus primarily on Short Beach and Dougie Beach. But anybody who wants to clean any other beach, um, just comes to the Lowlands Parking Lot and picks up a form or just sends me a note on what they collected at Forty Steps Canoe and, um, you know, the beach at Marjoram Park. So all the beaches are cleaned and, uh, the Tudor Beach. So they're all cleaned. And our wonderful DPW always picks up everything.
Great. Thanks, Vi.
Thanks, Vi, and, uh, thank you for your leadership with Slim and, you know, and doing this all the time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any, any further discussion on the motion?
Um, just reading the note here that the road race map can be found on the community calendar at the hotdog org.
Okay. Okay, any further? Being hearing on, all in favor?
Gene Canty, aye.
Josh Antrim, aye.
Not coming alive. We have an Arbor Day proclamation. Um, I really appreciate if you read that, uh, Josh.
Oh, I gotta, okay.
I can.
I, I can read it for you too. I can read it if you'd like.
All right, go ahead, Tony.
And Vi, uh, if you want to jump on after this, um, this is, has to do with the, uh, Tree City USA. Um, this is our, an official proclamation, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Tony Barletta, Town Administrator of the Town of Nahat, do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four as Arbor Day in the Town of Nahat. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this, of this and future generations.
Well, do we need a motion to accept this proclamation? Probably not, right?
Wouldn't hurt.
Okay, no, even motion to accept this proclamation?
I move that the board of selectmen, um, accept the Arbor Day proclamation as read by the town administrator.
Yeah. Yeah, seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Tony, you wanted Vi to uh, speak on this?
Vi, would you, would you care to speak on this? I know Tree City USA is uh, an important one for you.
Yes, I'm sorry. I can't seem to turn on my video. Um, yeah, so we have become a Tree City USA a few years ago. And one of the regulations by the National Arbor Day Foundation is that every year, this proclamation must be made officially um, by the town. Um, and then every year, it has to be si- the Arbor Day has to be celebrated. Fortunately, the our Nahat Garden Club does that, takes care of that problem, not problem, but that technic- technicality. And I'm I'm sure you've all noticed the sign coming into Nahat, kind of opposite the bank that says Tree City USA. So usually just little things we have to do every year and make us think a bit about how important tree ours, trees are. And make us think about planting more.
And and by uh, we have, we got funding last year through the CPC for tree planting uh, at the golf course, and our hope is to be doing that in the spring. So maybe uh, maybe we could ho- uh, try to work that out to do it near April twenty-sixth uh, in in honor of Arbor Day.
That'd be fantastic. There, my camera's working. That would be absolutely wonderful. And Swim has pledged to um, buy tr- contribute to the town for buying trees. Um, so whenever that wants to get plugged in and activated, more and more trees are coming down um, for, you know, age and disease, et cetera. And we, Swim really supports the planting of trees and the keeping of good trees and keeping them healthy.
Thank you, Vi. Thank you, Tony. Um, any further discussion on this? Being hearing that, all in favor?
Jane, can't the eye.
Josh, enter mine.
Not coming alive. Okay, we have to open the uh, the wallet, the annual town meeting warrant. Have a motion for that?
So made.
Okay, um, we have a second, so.
Seconded.
Motion made, seconded. Hey, Tony, um, you wanna discuss the warrant?
Yes, and I will, I'm gonna share my screen. How's that? Is it small?
Could you uh, zoom a little bit? There you go. That works on my laptop.
So we we'll find, uh, we have, we continue to make amendments to the town meeting warrant over the next few weeks and usually conclude that process with the exception, uh, the accepting of the approved Community Preservation Committee articles. Uh, so this is a working document, um, and we, that will open and close uh, pretty much each meeting for the next few, for the next couple of months here, and we'll share it with the Finance Committee as it gets updated. Um, we have pretty, it's a pretty standard uh, draft at this point. As you can see, the first uh, first item here is the greetings. The town meeting will be on the eighteenth day of May, starting at twelve-thirty here in the Town Hall. Um, these first couple of articles are typical. Article one is uh, fiscal year twenty-four transfers. Uh, so moving money from the current uh, fiscal year budget from one account to another requires town meeting vote. Article two uh, is related to snow and ice. Uh, so again, um, related to the current fiscal year snow and ice budget. Should we need to transfer funds to cover the uh, costs that uh, uh, related to snow and ice? Article three is prior year bills. So if the town uh, receives a bill uh, for services conducted in a previous fiscal year, requires town meeting vote. Uh, so if we have any of those, those will, those will come up uh, for vote, um, Article three. Article four is the Salary Classification Plan. Article five is Compensation for Elected Positions. Article six is our Omnibus Budget. Um, I have later in this, on the agenda is to go through the uh, budget schedule. We've uh, internally conducted department head meetings individually with uh, the Bor- uh, with myself and uh, our Town Account and Finance Director, Al Sanieto. We're currently uh, drafting uh, the Board of Selectmen Budget, and at the next Board of Selectmen Meeting, uh, we'll have it in front of you to um, vote to send it to the Finance Committee. Uh, Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds are Article seven, so that has to do with uh, the money that we appropriate to be spent out of the enterprise funds in Water and Sewer. Article eight is standard uh, uh, borrowing article for water sewer paving, typically for uh, any type of paving that we have to do as a result of unplanned uh, underground utility work. Article nine is the Rubbish Enterprise. Uh, that's uh, authorizes appropriations out of the enter- the Trash Enterprise Account. Ten is um, for the for the compost area off of Spring Road. Uh, we use these funds to um, transfer uh, compost collected uh, out of town. Eleven and twelve are standard uh, limit-setting articles related to existing revolving funds. Thirteen is our other post-employment um, benefit fund. The uh, we typically s- we typically put about twenty-five thousand dollars uh, per year into our OPEB account. Uh, these, I have these blank because as I mentioned, we're still working on the budget. Uh, so the final numbers will get, be incorporated at a future meeting. Stabilization Fund is, again, this authorizes the transfer of funds into the stabilization account. Paving, Article fifteen, this is a standard uh, article that authorizes us to borrow a sum of money uh, to be used for paving, according to our paving plan. Article sixteen is highlighted in yellow because I, I'm I th- I'm pretty sure, I'm not positive, I need to double check that we don't actually need to do this article anymore, but this had to do with the local re- revenue, uh, local revenue collected through usage of Uber or VRB or um, uh.
Ubers and lifts and.
Lifts.
Yeah.
Uh, yep. And so we get a small percentage of any uh, ride that is initiated in the Town of Nahat. But the state would rec- used to require that we have a town meeting vote authorizing the appropriation of those funds. I believe they eliminated that, so we may not actually need this article. Um, again, Article seventeen uh, is for larger sewer capital uh, borrowing. Uh, we're still reviewing the capital requests and uh, we'll fill that number in should we need uh, authorization to borrow any funds uh, for any DPW capital items. Uh, Article eighteen, MWRA, as a MWR community, we are, we're eligible for zero-interest loans through the MWRA um, loan uh, program. We typically borrow through this program on an annual basis to help pay for uh, any type of water line capital projects. Chapter ninety highway i- Article nineteen is uh, chapter ninety is our, the funds that we receive from the state to be used for things such as paving and other transportation-type capital, and it need requires an appropriation. Approval of appropriation. Article twenty, this is where the Community Preservation Articles will be uh, added in as sub articles, once we have the uh, final makeup of that from the Community Preservation Committee. Article twenty-one, uh, we received a request from the Sailing uh, Program Committee to change the number of seats on their committee, which uh, requires a town meeting vote because it was originally uh, voted at town meeting, creating that committee. We received one citizen's petition related to Lowlands Drainage uh, to appropriate up to eight hundred thousand dollars uh, for Lowlands Drainage Improvements. Um, that's also another item on my agenda here, so are on our agenda for me to speak to. So I'll give an update as to where we are with that process, but this article um, came in before the deadline with the appropriate number of signatures. Uh, we weren't aware that it was coming in ahead of time. Um, it's we've kinda gone through this over the last few years, and I uh, will speak, I I'll I'll communicate with the neighborhood and uh, talk to them about this article over the next couple of weeks. And lastly, uh, continuing committees. Uh, this is a standard article as well.
So, the usual stuff, basically. Um, what, just a question, uh, why is the com- why is the compost need its own article as opposed to coming out of the DPW budget?
I think that comes from rubbish, uh, Trash and Rubbish Enterprise Fund, doesn't it, Tony?
Right. I think we use retained earnings in our rubbish enterprise account for that purpose, so we have, it needs its own vote to authorize the spending of it. Okay?
Okay. Jane, any, any comments on that? Tony, you're gonna speak, um, in a little bit more detail on some of the articles? Uh, is that gonna be in your administrative report?
Uh, that's just the general overview of them. They're all pretty much standard at this point. Um, so I don't have much to add, but I am gonna talk a little bit about where we are with the Lowlands Drainage uh, items. Um, and, you know, if if, if uh, w- we can get into more detail at the next, at the next selectmen meeting if we want to.
Okay, I I just wanna offer, I know that what it's, what we're doing here is preparing the Board of Selectmen Budget um, to be presented to the Finance Committee. So it's just, I just wanna offer, if the Finance Committee wishes or if you would like um, me as Chair of the Board to attend any of those meetings, please let me know and I I'll try to schedule that in.
Excellent. I was on an email uh, chain with uh, the uh, Chairman of the Finance Committee today, you know, talking about scheduling those meetings over the next few weeks. And like I said, I'm I'm gonna talk a little bit about the timeline uh, later in the meeting.
Okay.
Hey, Tony, uh, CPC articles. Um, how many are there? And and where's that stand right now?
Uh, the deadline was January twenty-third. Um, I believe I think that they have maybe ten or eleven articles or applications that were submitted, seven of which were from the Town of Nahat. Um, they, the, the Community Preservation Committee meets every Monday night. Uh, so if if anyone's interested in paying attention to those meetings, uh, this past Monday, we spoke about a couple of the town applications. Um, and they've, they're, over the next few Mondays, that's what they'll be doing, is hearing from the applicants to get further information about, you know, the applications that were submitted.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tony. Um, do I have a motion to close the uh, warrant?
So moved.
Seconded.
Uh, motions are made to close the warrant. Um, seconded?
Seconded, yeah.
Any further discussion? Being hearing that, all in favor?
Jane, can't the eye.
Josh, enter mine.
Not coming alive.
Oh, um, Mark, um, thanks for volunteering to uh, participate in the uh, pincom meetings. I think that's really important that the Board of Selectmen have some representation there, so thanks a lot for.
Yeah, that is.
Yeah, I agree.
Hopefully, hopefully it's not everyone.
Yeah.
If it is, I'm gonna ask for a raise.
They have some uh, they have some marathon meetings this, you know, heading into this time of year.
Uh, I look forward to the, you know, going down into the dungeon again. Those are late nights. I remember those, Tony. They pop sometimes and they go on forever, but um, uh, it's good work by everybody. Alright, so uh, Lowland Stormwater and Water Main Improvement update. Tony?
So we have a, another large capital project uh, going out to bid on February fourteenth. And bids will be due, I I think they're gonna be due February twenty-ninth and maybe the twenty-eighth. Um, but either way, at the end of February, we'll be opening bids uh, for stormwater drainage improvements in the Lowlands area, as well as water main line improvements for Fox Hill Road and Emerald Road. Um, half of that, the stormwater drainage improvements is funded locally through borrowing, um, approved at previous town meetings. And the other half is through that MWRA Zero Interest Loan Program. Um, by by putting them out together, uh, we hope to get a better price for the Town of Nahat. It's similar work. Um, and the Lowland Stormwater Drainage Improvements is Alternative Two, which wa- uh, if you recall, we had a a firm, we hired a firm a year or so ago to look at the s- the stormwater issues that we have in the Lowlands area. And they did an extensive review and and an alternative analysis. Um, as a community, we determined that Alternative Two was our uh, Priority One um, project because it focuses on improving the existing uh, system that we had, uh, stormwater system that we have in that area as well as, you know, not only is it, was it to investigate and and repair uh, issues that we currently have, but also uh, improve the stormwater system. So it's going to include uh, the replacement, the potential upsizing, um, and the addition, uh, and s- and in some places, addition of catch basins uh, and underwater pipe, uh, pipes that we have uh, that run along Castle Road, Fox Hill Road, and Ward Road. Um, uh, so I'll be, I'll be scheduling a neighborhood meeting uh, to uh, invite our engineer and speak more in detail, especially with the neighborhood uh, on what, you know, is gonna be included in the uh, bid documents for that project. But it's a, it's been a long, a long time, long time coming to get that out on the street. Oh, and then I'll just also mention that, you know, for those who live or travel on Fox Hill Road or Emerald Road, um, you know, we fully understand that it's been a hassle uh, over the last year. So with the amount of underground utility work, that's either, you know, temporarily closing the road down or then leaving, you know, trench, repaired trenches with, you know, uh, bumpy roads. Um, but this is all part of a larger plan to uh, make these underground repairs first and then uh, follow that up with a final pavement project uh, after you get that one year of uh, one winter season of settling. So uh, Emerald Road especially, you know, had sewer, sewer line repairs, gas line repairs, and and soon to be water line repairs. Fox Hill Road has had sewer line repairs, gas repairs, and soon to have stormwater and uh, water line repairs. So both roads are going uh, through a a lot of construction, and we apologize for the inconvenience. A, a lot of construction and we apologize for the inconvenience, uh, but it's, it's in an effort to, um. You know, get everything nice underneath the ground, under, under the surface and then uh finish it with a, with a nice uh repaved road.
Uh, well, before we move up, um, before we move off of the road or, um, Castle Road Drainage Improvements, um. Uh, I agree with you, Tony, it's been a long time coming, and sort of amazingly comp- complex, um. Uh, for me personally, and I, I think selectmen, it's a huge relief uh to know this, this work will be starting quite soon. Um, it seemed to me to see the results of the camera uh work that, um, I forget the name. Crew, uh, they hired to do that, um, but. Um, the, the variety of pipe sizes, pipe materials, conditions, it's a real claptrap down there, particularly under. Castle Road, uh, and you know, the, the drainage in the, um. Otis, um, some of those corrugated metal pipes are collapsing, so, um. Uh, definitely time to get this done, so, um, really excited that, that, um. That that project's going out to bid.
And I could simply uh state or reiterate that this is long overdue.
Hopefully we'll get this behind us pretty soon, um, thanks, Tony, on that. Um, there's some ongoing business, uh, P A goals and then the community preservation project status, where. I'll just jump in on the P A goals, I think we've been over this uh last few meetings. We've established the goals, we've set them, I think our next meeting on them with you, Tony, will be. The first quarter, which will be in April, if we agreed as a board to meet weekly quarterly, uh, to review those goals. Without being at the end of the year. Um, that leaves us with the community preservation part, projects, wanna go through them?
Yeah, which I'll just, I'll just add that, um, is on this tonight, Mark, as one of Tony's goals was to, um. Regular updates on the CPC project, so, um.
So I, I was reading it incorrectly, so it wasn't two items, right? It was one item?
Yeah, it's, it's, well, yeah, it's one item in support of, of the goals.
Okay, gotcha, okay, good. Alright, go ahead, Tony.
Alright, um, I'm going to share my screen again. Um, how's that look?
Looks good.
Okay, so. I'm gonna go through this pretty quickly. Uh, and spend more time on the more recent projects that have been approved, but uh this goes back to twenty. Twenty to twenty twenty-one, and those in green are complete. Uh, so Tudor Beach Stairs, Johnson School Basketball Courts. Uh, Nahhot Road Softball Field Improvements, Open Space Master Plan. Uh, improvements to the public library on the terrace and, and building envelope. Uh, Flash Road Tennis and Basketball Courts, are, all those projects are complete. Town Hall Counts on Aging is, uh, we're going through a planning process currently, so this, this, uh. We're essentially holding on to this grant, uh, until we determine next steps related to the Counts on Aging Kitchen. Uh, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, uh. Uh, further improvements to Flash, that, that we actually needed additional funding. So there was additional money approved at a follow-up town meeting for the tennis and basketball courts at Flash Road, again, that's complete. Um, Bailey's Hill Park, Fort Ruckman, uh, this is the East Slope. Um, there's a couple grants that funded uh advancement of this project through CPC and it's. Essentially complete, aside for some additional spring planting this year. Lowland Softball Fields, again, this was for uh benches and fencing. Uh, Little Nahhot Playground, it was completed this past year. Uh, Spring Road Basketball Court has been complete for a couple of years. Um, Ellingwood Chapel, this was a cultural council application that was submitted. Uh, for improvements to the Ellingwood Chapel, um, I need to go back and revisit, that wasn't from. Uh, from the town to hop, but more from the cultural council, so I need to revisit the language as to. Uh, what specifically that application was for. Um, Town Hall Handicap Access Improvements, this is currently in design. Uh, once the design is complete, our next step is go, is to go to the Historical Commission. Um, and possibly Massachusetts Historical Commission. Uh, for approval because the town hall has a preservation restriction on it, so we have to make sure that the design. Of the handicap ramp uh complies with the historical elements of the building. Um. And then East Point Conservation Restriction is obviously on hold, um, there's no action, we're awaiting the outcome of the uh eminent domain litigation. Twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, so these are more recent. Uh, again, Bailey's Hill Restoration, uh, this, this had to do with. Uh, the Behind the Gazebo uh restored to the, restore, restoring the trails, reducing uh. And uh invasive vegetation, that project is complete. Uh, again, there's more work to be done there and it's featured, I believe it's one of the applications that's before the CPC. Uh, this year for consideration. Um. Maintenance Plan of Lodge Park has been completed as well. Um. Heritage Trail Enhancement, that was submitted by the Johnson School, it was for eleven thousand dollars, it had to do with. The Heritage Trail between uh Flash Road Playground to the Johnson School. Uh, we were, we've been working with the principal, um, um, actually putting that. Grant on hold to see if we can include it with our application this year. Which it to, uh, for a Flash Road Park Recreation Master Plan. So we thought, you know, to combine the two would be a good effort. The Housing Production Plan uh is in progress, uh, we're, we know. Almost, almost complete with that process, the Housing Production. Uh, Plan Subcommittee is going through, uh. Additional edits based off uh public comment and will be releasing a new draft. Uh, sometime soon for additional public comment, uh, so we're nearing completion there. Town Hall Acoustic and Lighting Improvement is in progress, IP stands for in progress, by the way, um, we've. Installed stage and window curtains, we installed new audio equipment, we installed area uh rugs. Um, next step there is to, uh, quote out some of the lighting upgrades. Um, Playground Equipment is also on hold, uh, because of other, because of the Flash Road Master Plan, um, and. There's only about two, twenty-eight hundred dollars left in that anyways. We spent a lot of that, uh, a lot of those funds for other upgrades at other, uh, at other parks already. And the flagpole at Town Hall, uh, I'm seeking quotes on making repairs to the flagpole at Town Hall currently. And last year's town meeting approvals. Uh, for CPC applications that the town in the hot submitted or were part of. Uh, pickleball at Flash Road Tennis Courts, so the, that's in progress. Uh, the law, the, the lines have been painted. And a lighting plan has been submitted to the Conservation Commission for approval, hopefully we'll be going before them. I think their meeting is next week or the week after. Uh, to review that plan, and then once we get approval, we're hopefully gonna be uh installing those lights. Uh, in the early spring. This was restoration of Fort Ruckman is what I spoke to earlier, uh, most of the plantings and the earthwork is complete. Uh, it came out really, really good and encourage people to, to take a walk down there. Uh, we may be putting additional plantings, uh, this, this spring. Uh, I spoke a little bit earlier about the fifty thousand dollars that we received for trees at Kelly Greens as well as the pedestrian bridge. At Bear Pond, um, where we, we are hoping to plant those trees. Maybe around Arbor Day, and I need a, I need to get a structural engineer to come out and take and evaluate the pedestrian bridge. And help us determine what the next steps are on restoring that. Um, and then Town Rites of Way, uh, where that's also in progress, we've already. Conducted a lot of the title research for all takings in the town dating back, uh. Dan, you might remember what year we did, we went back.
Eighteen eighty or something, I think is when we went back to, or there are, are, um, titles now went back to.
And, uh, next step there is for, to do, uh. Title research on a butters of right of, of known rite of ways in town, um. And that's it, that's where, that's where we're at with all those different projects.
Yeah, and they comp answered the report, um, Josh and Gene, any comments on these?
Um. It's a good list, um, I'm, I'm hoping there's a way, um, we can reactivate, um. The, um, the Heritage Trail improvements that was submitted by the Johnson School, you mentioned that we're trying to. Incorporate that into the master plan and I. Um, I just hope we can, um, get at least that portion done in the near term, I think about, you know. That the idea behind that submitted, I think, is, you know, encourage to school, school, whatever the case may be. You know, get out in the fresh air, um, you know, to us, waiting two or three years isn't, isn't a lot, but. You know, fifth grade and you wanna ride this, it takes, it takes three years, you'll, you'll never get to. Riding this little section of bike path or whatever, so, um, if there's a way we can. You know, get that part done in the near term, like, uh, you know, it'll benefit our, our kids at the Johnson School, so. Like to see it get done.
And, uh, and, and following up on that, I was talking with Tony today and I said, it's interesting, if you take. All these projects that have been completed over the last five, two years, what it, five to ten years. What a change you've had in the town, and I said, you, I can't imagine what the next five to ten years will bring. In terms of project completion, beautification, et cetera, it's, it's really been a remarkable job over the past few years.
Had a great job and, yeah, he has a good team behind him, I'm, I'm sure that he would credit, um. Great, um.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a great program overall, this, the, the CPA bill and, you know, been, um. You know, voted to become part of this program, I think in four and, um. Lot of state matches, we get more, how much, we get a higher state match because we were early adopters, um, so it's really, um. As I said, Gene, you know, enabled us to, you know, enhance our. Doctors and do the necessary repairs and it's been an amazing program.
It really has, um. You, you know, maybe, Tony, I, I, I think that the Community Preservation Committee does have, I said, the proposal, um. Uh, Allison may have, um, how much we received in sort of. Uh, matches with a, uh, with a state and all of our projects, since I believe we adopted this in. At two thousand two or two thousand three, um, but it has to be in a million. Um, so I'd like to take a look at, um, at some point, maybe Allison would put together. The total cost of these projects and how much of it was paid for, um, to the state match.
We did, we, uh, let's see. Inclusive of matches provided by applicants and exclusive of borrowings and through. This past fiscal year, the CPA will have provided the town with thirteen million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars. To use your CPA projects.
The thirteen million was, was from the state for our project.
I think that's total, I think that's total dollars exclusive of borrowings. Um, inclusive of any sort of matches, that's total dollars spent. Um, how much of that is just matching dollars?
Probably close to seventy percent.
Yeah.
Yeah. They get averages around sixty-six percent, something like that, last year it was close to a hundred percent. So for those that don't know, it, it varies year to year depending on how much. I think the revenue all comes from, um, a fee on real estate transactions, so. In years that have higher real estate transactions in the state, we get a higher match. I think it's a bit lower this.
Okay, it's, it's, uh, I have it right here. So of that thirteen point seven million, eight point one is grant dollars, so from the state. Four point two, uh. Was the town's share of that, which, which equals then the town's share of the total cost. Uh, of all projects is around thirty-one percent, so seventy percent, I think that's what you said, probably around seventy percent, right?
Exactly.
So this is great, so last year, the Community Preservation Committee, is this blurred?
It is blurred.
Well, they made their last, we kind of separated out the, the CPC report from the FinCon book. And gave, and made it its own book, and, um, it's really nice to have that as its own, as its own, uh. Document, which will be updated on an annual basis.
Well, it's, it, 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 as Josh said, it's, it's been terrific and it serves the town well, uh, it serves the taxpayers well. A, a lot of this thirteen million dollars worth of projects over those years wouldn't, would, would, wouldn't have been done, um. And, um, it's been a great program and I. I suppose, uh, to continue it, okay? Alright, uh, preserving East Point, Josh, I know that there was a hearing last week, uh, talk about that one?
Um, yes, um, there was a hearing on, um, at, um, Essex Superior Court, um, in Newburyport. On the twenty-sixth, um, this was a hearing, um, on motions for summary judgment. Um. Yeah, I guess I'll give you the layman's, my, my layman's interpretation of the transaction, which was, um. Both sides, their, their case about why the judge should decide in their favor, and. The judge is thinking about it, is the, is the short answer, um, so this is, um. Uh, the, the claim by Northeastern is that, um, the eminent domain conservation restriction is, um. Constitutes a bad faith taking and, um, and Nahhot summary judgment is, um, no, it doesn't, and, uh, so he's, uh. Pondering that, I guess, um, also, there is a hearing on the appeal of the. Case, that's the dedication case, uh, this hearing on that, uh, appeal on February fourteenth. Um, so the, uh, the hope there is that it gets referred to Superior Court.
Josh, did, did this come down to a decision by the judge to, to either go summary judgment or, or jury trial?
Um. If he makes a summary judgment, there would be no trial.
Yeah, there's no jury.
There may not be a jury, um, it could be a trial, it could be a bench trial, um.
Right, if he, if he can't make a. If he doesn't make a summary judgment, then it would go to trial.
Right, right, so that's how it works.
But it, it, it would not necessarily be a jury trial, it most likely would be a bench trial.
Yeah, which would, I mean, this is just my layman's opinion, but that would make sense in this case because, um. Judge, he's handling, um, both cases, so he's, you know, up to. You know, up to speed with all the facts and the history and the depositions and all that stuff. Uh, I guess from a practical point of view, it would make sense that he would continue on as the. As the judge per a bench trial.
I couldn't, I couldn't imagine going to a jury trial on something that has taken. You know, four years of depositions and evidence and this and that. I mean, we'd be out there for another four or five years, but, um. Uh, I would imagine if, 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 if the judge does not, you, um. If they have a summary judgment, that it would, uh, Dan, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but it was most likely the, the event trial before him, right?
Right, well, not necessarily him unless he's specially asked for the case. In Massachusetts. The Superior Court judges rotate from county to county, believe it or not, uh, and that's intended to avoid what they call judge shopping. So unless this ju, a judge had it specially assigned to him. He may or may not be the trial judge.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yep, so that's, um, that's where things stand, um.
I he, I heard you spent a, a beautiful, um, day up in Newburyport, listening.
Yeah.
I think I've some work done.
Uh, not in the courtroom, um, there were a few people, there were a few, uh, Nahat people there in attendance, um, in addition to, to me, um. And, yeah, the judge said, I forget, thirty-five hundred pages or so of deposition. So, so on, so. It's a lot to go through for him.
Yeah. So thanks, Josh. Um, okay, town administrator.
Uh, so starting off with the budget timeline, I am going to share my screen again, uh. So, uh, CPC applications were due on January twenty-third. Uh, citizen petitions, written summaries and committee requests, except for the CPC. Uh, for annual town meeting warrant articles were due on the thirty-first. Uh, next Board of Select meeting, Wednesday, February twenty-first, we will approve. The budget and warrant and send it to the Finance Committee for their process, which is eight weeks, uh, lead time for, for them. Um, they will, uh, finalize their book of recommendations and send it to the printer. Four weeks prior to town meeting on April nineteenth. Then we have a requirement to post the town meeting warrant fourteen days prior to the town meeting, which is May third. And the book will be delivered to all voter households seven days prior, uh, to. Uh, town meeting on May tenth. However, I remind folks that last year, uh, the Finance Committee also. Uh, we, we published, when they sent their final version to, uh, the printer. Which this year will be on April nineteenth, we also uploaded that document to our website, so. You can get advanced copy of it electronically on our website, uh, but it'll, it'll be delivered to your home. On, uh, by May tenth. Annual town meeting is Saturday, May eighteenth, and then as usual, our potential second day, which I don't anticipate. Uh, this year would be Monday, May twentieth.
It's nice to see all this, uh, pre-year. You know, been trying to back out all the dates based on one town meeting, you know, uh, feels organized, Tony. Thanks.
Yeah, yes, thank you. Um, I'm not going to go into an extensive dive on the community preservation applications. Like I said, you know, we're doing that. At the CPC meetings on Monday nights, um, but briefly, I, we submitted applications. For, uh, restoration or repairs at the, uh, for the Bailey's Hill gazebo. Uh, we beach access mats and wheelchairs to improve. Uh, ADA accessibility to beaches where possible, uh, Flash Road, uh. Recreation master plan, improvements to the Heritage Trail at Goddard Drive, uh, so that we can. You know, we are, the, the idea there is to, uh, you know, clearly mark. The right of way before the properties get sold. Um, a housing development study, so this is the next step, uh. You know, after looking at the general housing production plan and kind of a general overview of possible. Uh, opportunities to, um, develop housing, this would be to fund a more, you know, site-specific. Study on what, uh, could potentially be built in certain, you, you know, in a particular area of town. Number of units, how many square feet, cost, any type of site limitations. Uh, you know, what the town, um, what the, what the people in town, uh, would be comfortable with. It would be the cost, this, this application would fund, you know, that public process, so. That one, I think we're going to talk, Michelle and I are going to talk more about that one specifically on Monday night, so, uh. You know, I think that one probably will draw a lot of attention, you know, tune in Monday night to the CPC meeting to hear more about that. Um, Little League, uh, the Little League field lighting. And s, uh, a splash pad at Flash Road Playground. Uh, so those were the different applications that we submitted, and I've already spoke to the CPC at the last meeting about, um, splash at Flash. Little League lighting and recreation master plan. Um, the next is an update on the II Gravity Sewer Repair Work, uh. Repairs that are occurring currently, um, and I understand there's some, uh, social media. Uh, discussion about the sign that was put up at, uh, Veterans Memorial Park, um. That sign is a requirement of the SRF program-funded projects. Which is the Ward Road Pump Station and this Gravity Sewer Repair, uh, work, um. You know, we don't, we don't choose how big that sign is or what it looks like, or even what the words are on, that's the grant. Requirements stipulate that. I, there was a miscommunication between me and the contractor. When I said install it at the end of Ward Road, I meant the pump station end, not. Uh, the pharmacy end, and, uh, I've already called. Um, the American Legion to apologize for, you know, that being installed in the, uh. Veterans Memorial Park, you know, not a proper place for that to be located. So it's getting moved. Um, but it's a, it's, it's standard signage that, uh, comes with, you know, these, these grants oftentimes will require that. Um, but the gravity sewer, the gravity sewer system repairs, uh, related to infiltration and inflow. Or otherwise we call II, is it's under contract with National Water Main for just under one million dollars. And we are currently ahead of schedule. The scope of the project was determined through the analysis of CCTV inspections of the town's gravity sewer system. Conducted in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Uh, this project includes twelve thousand linear feet of cured-in-place lining. In six-inch, eight-inch, ten-inch and twelve-inch sewer lines. Uh, it also includes heavy cleaning of sewer segments, cutting intruding sewer services. Lining and sealing of eighty-two sewer manholes and furnishing and installing forty-eight. Watertight sewer manhole covers. Current status is that the construction of sewer repairs have been completed. In three areas of Nahat Sewer System, which were Upper Nahat Road, uh, Castle Road area and Willow Road area. So after our contractor, uh, camered these sewer lines. And noticed any type of breaks or issues that would negatively impact the process of lining a sewer. Sewer line, they did spot repairs in those areas first, uh, and that work has been completed. Now they're working on the main sewer line, uh, uh, cured-in-place lining, uh. They've been working on it for the last week and a half, it'll go through the end of next week on the main lines. Over the next two months, they'll start working on the lateral sewer services, uh, of that. Um, are of eight inch or more, so any eight-inch, ten-inch, twelve-inch sewer lines that were lined. The service lines connecting to those, the laterals, will be, uh, will get about four feet of. Cured-in-place lining from the sewer line, uh, from the main onto the lateral. And that's because most II, most infiltration occurs at that joint. So curing it through the service line helps really prevent that additional inflow of unnecessary water for treatment. Um, on, as for the watertight manholes, there's a six-to-eight week lead time, so. It's likely that that's not going to happen until late April or May, uh, and with that, with the sewer. Manhole and with the installment of those, uh, manhole covers, there's also going to be the cement lining of those manholes as well. So the, the whole idea of this project is to. Eliminate unnecessary infiltration of water into the sewer system that doesn't need to be treated. Um, it's part, it's, it was part of our administrative consent order from the DEP. Uh, from a few years ago, which actually helped us, uh, with competitiveness when applying for the SRF. Funding. Um, and so that, and, and that's where coming back to, uh, you know, it's financed through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. Which is administered by, uh, Mass DEP and the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. With funding from the US Environmental, uh, EPA, Environmental Protection Agency. Uh, so that's, that's the update there.
Yeah, so that looks good, Tony, um, it's, you know, the other day I was coming out of town myself. Uh, I thought we were electing a pope if I'm going across the road, there's smoke coming up, uh. But, um, I noticed, I, I go over there, they, they were doing the, uh, lining, it's a used steam in. But, um, one of the things that, um, you didn't mention is, you know, well, you sort of mentioned that. The town pays for its water and sewer rate, well, sewer rate in particular, to treat this. Uh, infiltration into our water mains. So hopefully with these improvements, uh, at some point we can see. An, an impact or a, a decrease in our, at least on our sewage and our water sewer, um, rate.
Definitely, it, it adds, and it adds just a, a burden to the system. Uh, especially in heavy rains or flooding, uh. Our, the amount of volume that we typically send on a dry day to Lynn Water Sewer to be treated. I think doubles on those, in those occurrences, so it's a massive strain on our system. And we're paying to treat water that doesn't need to be treated, um, so. It's definitely something that we need to work on, um, because A, uh, it's part of our consent order. And B, it's going to provide benefits to the town.
Yeah, that's, I was just gonna say, you know, this is a, it's a big project, it's a big investment in our infrastructure. That, as you said, Mark, is gonna pay off and, you know, you've explained to me, Tony, that there's been a few spots where they've. Found the sewer pipe essentially just crushed, um, so, you know, really important infrastructure. Project and, uh, I'm sure people have seen the trucks around town and, um, yeah, so. Another project that's really good to be getting done.
Tony, what's the timeframe on that?
Uh, so they, they'll be done this summer, unless we run into some major delay with. Receiving the watertight manholes, there's a big lead time on those, um. A six-to-eight week lead time, you know, they should be done with the, with the gravity sewer repairs this summer, this project.
Will, will that impact summer traffic at all?
No, I think the, the lining that you're seeing now has a big impact, but that next phase of the project. So the lining that's happening now is going to happen over the next month or so, um, so it should be done through March. Then, there's going to be kind of a delay and they're going to come back and do the manholes. Which isn't gonna, it shouldn't impact traffic in the same way.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, we're also, you know, at the end of this project, we're gonna have a report too on illicit connections. So that's, you know, downspouts or some pumps, um, you know, that when they're, when they were doing the camera work. Uh, and, you know, it's, you'll see, you know, random flow of water through a lateral. And that's usually someone's using the sink, flushing the toilet, washing, you know, clothes. And then in some cases, it's constant flow. And so it's, odds are that that's due to some sort of some pump that's connected, you know, into the sewer system. And those are things that, you know, the DEP really wants us to make a strong effort to eliminate. Uh, because they shouldn't be going into the sewer system, it's not necessary to be treated. Um, so we will get a report of those findings from our contractor when we're done, um, and, and we'll need to review that as well.
Uh, Tony, um, uh, maybe you and perhaps Dan, I won't spend a lot of time on it. Or we could put it on the agenda for a future meeting, um, but, um, related to that, um. If we're looking at people, because a lot of people have their some pumps, well, not a lot, but there may be people who have their some pumps who get water in the basement. Are tied into the sewer system, and we're going to be telling them they can't do that anymore. Uh, some of these people may look at an alternative, they're pumping it out onto the street, um. And, you know, I, and that can cause a problem, particularly in the winter in terms of icing and those types of things. Um, so could you, uh, Dan, I know we had a couple complaints recently about, um. Some pumping out on the street causing hazards conditions, what the town policy or rules or regulations, uh, on that?
The, um, the bio that comes closest to addressing that, um. This mentions that you cannot pump water onto a sidewalk, um. So that's the closest we've come, uh, Tony and I talked about this, and there might be something in the state realm. That says, it's sort of state law, national laws, it says you can't pump water onto a public way, um, statutorily, but from a tort perspective. If someone's pumping water onto a public way, whether it be a sidewalk or a street. That creates what they call a public nuisance, which is to say a, a detriment to the public at large. If Mother Nature deposits stormwater onto your property, it's not up to you to take that stormwater and then put it on the public property or we put on someone else's property. Um, you'd have to leach through their own property and go where Mother Nature takes it to go, so we're addressing that issue now. Um, and, um, we're on top of it.
You know, what I like to try to do, because, uh, I mean, this was one incident, but, I mean, in, in my time as town administrator, it, it happened quite frequently. Uh, and certainly the town is willing to try to work with these homeowners. Uh, if there was a connection to a storm drain, um, nearby, we can help do that. Um, but, you know, if you have an issue with that, contact the town first before, like, just pumping it out onto a public way. And see if we can help, um, before you do that.
Certainly, certainly, yeah, we'd much rather, we'd much rather go into a storm drain, but. Below the surface, we don't want to, we don't want it to freeze above the surface and cause another problem.
That's right, yeah, yeah, okay, didn't want to deviate, yeah, by the way, thought it was a good time to bring it up. Okay, um, citizens' forum.
Hey, Mark, before you go into that, a quick question to Tony or to, or to you guys. Are we going to be reopening the bench memorial bench purchases?
We, it hasn't, we haven't discussed it.
No, I'm just, uh, is, is that something that we will be discussing? Even though I brought it up.
If you guys, if you guys want to, we could put it on the agenda of, of a future meeting.
I know I've had a couple of questions or comments on it, and I don't know about Josh or, or Mark. I know I've had a couple of questions or comments on it and I don't know about Josh or Mark. But it would be good to be able to give somebody an answer.
Right now, we're doing memorial trees, right?
Right, when we get, when we, when we get requests, we, we talk to the applicant about alternatives. Uh, for the most part, a lot of the requests we get are for new benches at the beach. You know, at a beach or, and there's been a moratorium on installing new benches at beaches because they're overloaded. And, and more specifically at Short Beach, um, you know, they're, they're, they're currently installed on an active dune. Uh, so we don't want to be encouraging people to be, you know, walking across the dune, so, um. We're not adding any new ones there either. So usually, typically we'll talk to the applicant about alternative locations for a bench or. Um, alternative ideas like a, like a memorial tree.
Okay, great.
Great, thanks for bringing up Dean. Um, after we put it on the agenda in the future. Okay, citizens forum.
Um, Mr. Chairman, could I just mention one thing before we? I, I, I should have mentioned this when we were talking about Arbor Day and trees and so on, but um, I just wanted to mention. That the Nahat Historical Society has a donation of five hundred dollars, um. For the town for new plantings at Veterans Park across from Life Saving Station. So um, a donation was made, uh, in the amount of two hundred fifty dollars by one of the members. Melvin Kaplan of California and um, the Historical Society matched that donation to total up to five hundred. Dollars for those bushes in Memorial Park, so. Thanks to um, Melvin Kaplan and the Historical Society.
Excellent.
Maybe that, um, you know, Tony, Zach and the garden, um, committee and. The veterans would get together and figure out what they want to do with that.
Definitely, I, I gotta, I gotta connect with them. About that anyways, because we, we actually have a, a new. Or it's a couple of years now that there's another um, branch of the military. That is not being represented currently at Veterans Memorial Park, so we have to talk about installing a new flagpole there anyways.
Okay. Jean and Josh, anything further before we move on to uh, citizens forum?
No, I'm good.
No, thank you.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Tony.
All right, so I'm, I'm just gonna go in order on my screen, no particular uh, order of preference or anything. Uh, if you can start, uh, when I am you or calling you, if you could just start by uh, stating for the record your name. And address and uh, you know, try to keep comments to, you know, five minutes or less. Uh, Tom?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to follow up, um, my memo that I sent to you from in November. And then I did follow up, have a meeting with Tony uh, and Dan on the twenty sixth of February. And they did acknowledge that the lot lines are in the street. Uh, at least along Castle Road on the, on the planning board drawing. Uh, they were not on the topographical plan drawing, uh, that we discussed. They offered several potential solutions to those three issues uh, that I wrote to you about. But they made no particular commitment to acting on any of those, uh. Because of the nature of this, I think some of those issues are conflicting or some of the potential solutions are directly conflicting. And um, I did ask that if we put on the agenda, but uh, that request was denied. And I, I just have a feeling that these things are important. Um, I'd like to at least discuss them and get some input from the selectmen. Uh, and see if I couldn't get a commitment for at least some of them.
Yeah, I think at this point, Tom, I, I did meet with the town administrator. Uh, following our last meeting, I know that you and Tony had met, discussed some of these items. Um, and I think you probably were on when Tony went through, we were at in the process. At this point, we're trying to make sure that we're implementing, we're following all of the um, requirements that were. Um, included in the twenty twenty one town meeting vote. Um, uh, making sure that that's all covered. I know that there are other issues or concerns that. That you, uh, other residents may have regarding the property that are not necessarily. Uh, related directly to what we voted on at, at town meeting and certainly, um. I'm not diminishing them, but we would certainly take them under consideration, um. As we move forward, uh, but, um, you know, I think that, uh, at this point, we'll take them. We'll take, you know, you, you've talked to Tony, Tony has talked, has talked to us about it. We're taking them under consideration and we'll see where it goes from there.
Okay, well, one of the points is directly related on to what was voted on. It's the twenty-five percent floor area ratio. And we did discuss that the lot lines being in the street. And then allowing someone to build, you know, twenty-five hundred square foot house on a lot that really isn't usable. You know, there were options to maybe specify setbacks in the deed. Uh, or size limits in the deeds specifically for those respected lots, which made some sense. And it does relate to that, something that the town voted on. So not all of them are just. You know, like doing the sidewalk the right height or finding a sidewalk on Gardner, so.
Yeah, so noted, and I know that Tony and Tom Council are looking into that. Um, and looking at what um, usual alternatives there are as we move forward.
Yeah, and then there was one other point that we didn't discuss, but the committee was trying to get at least a base set of subdivision plans. And there's an area that we never really even got to, that I think is also important, but the committee never got to it, is that the. The drainage lines, you were talking about the sewers before, but the, there's gonna have to be. You know, some work done on Goddard or no. Yeah, Goddard Road, uh, because the sewer actually is, is above the road. So, you know, we never got to get that plan completed for you. And I'm assuming or hoping that you're still working with uh, Hayes or somebody to get that plan developed. Because some of that soil is probably going to be needed. So you can fill in that or support that sewer, because right, right now it's just, you know, open, open pipe in the, in the air.
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm sure, you know, we're, as we go through the process and. You know, working with our attorneys and our, you know, our engineers and we'll, we'll make sure that those things are covered.
Okay, is there going to be any feedback at all on these deeds before they go out to bid? Public feedback.
Uh, I would say not, I, I think that the deeds, the deeds and the restrictions on the deeds. Will be consistent with, with what was voted on at town meeting. Unless I'm missing something, Dan or uh, Tony?
No, the deeds would not be an issue until the property is sold and then we start negotiating with the buyer.
But, I mean, the restrictions listed on the deed.
They'll, they'll be compliant, they have to be compliant with what town meeting voted on.
No, and my understanding, Tony, is those restrictions or those deed restrictions be part of the. Um, RFP, uh, the, uh. So one of the, one of the evaluations we'll be looking at in terms of the selling of the property as well. They, you know, they have to be in compliance with the restrictions voted on at town meeting.
Okay, and are you considering doing anything to Goddard Road before you sell it? And before they start uh, building or after?
Well, uh, we have to get there with a few more houses on Goddard Drive, hopefully we do that, but go ahead, Tony.
Uh, yeah, Mike, I mean, our primary objective right now is to. Sell enough lots to pay off the debt that's due in twenty twenty-five. Um, you know, any type of widening or improvements to sidewalks or streets. Are certainly things that we want to accomplish, but aren't necessarily required to be done. Prior to selling the properties.
Okay, well, this one's suggesting on the order. You might just put the one, three, five, seven, nine, eleven and a half and do them slightly at random, so it doesn't. Block all up on Castle, uh, initially.
Yeah, you know, the, it, the, the motion says alternating lots to reduce construction congestion. But there's no way, you know, the sale of the lot and when construction begins. Aren't necessarily tied to each other.
Uh, I understand that.
Okay, great, thank you, Tom.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, anyone else on, yeah, two hands raised.
Uh, Brendan?
Brendan, Brendan Bronick Olmstead to Summer Street. Um, had a question about the, I don't know if it's National Grid or someone is, I guess, blocking off the streets over by Emerald Road. And the MBTA bus isn't able to complete its route. Um, my housemate had to like run all the way over to the intersection of like Flash Road by the uh, golf, golf course sign. In order to catch the bus, because the bus wasn't able to proceed down, um, Emerald. I was checking to see how long is that work going to be going on?
Emerald Road, uh, is, is National Grid, so I'd have to reach out to, to that. What their, what their um, schedule is, but there, there are detours marked out, I'm not sure. How the bus was impacted, but I could find out, I can talk to National Grid to find out, uh, what they're.
Okay, so I know like this afternoon, um, down by Tudor Beach. You know, the, the Valley Road was blocked off, so you couldn't go down Valley and Emerald was also blocked off. So how is the bus gonna get down to Willow Road?
It was, it was quite the corn maze, uh, this morning down in that area, but because of the. Uh, sewer repair project that's occurring uh, at the same time. Uh, but they're two different contractors, two different, you know, the, the sewer repair is the town. The dash, you know, the gas repair is National Grid. Um, it shouldn't, the sewer repair stuff, like I said, should be done uh, through the end of next week, so, um. And they, and they're moving, you know, they're not in the same spot every day, so uh, it should resolve itself fairly quickly.
I, I, I guess I'm trying to understand is like, is the MBTA bus able to complete its full route or not? Because if not, my housemate's got to run to the other side of town to catch the bus.
It should be, it should be, it should be, there's, you know, there is detour uh, routes lined up uh, or set out on the street. Uh, and certainly plenty of uh, police details to help navigate traffic, um.
Yeah, I don't know whether, um, Brendan, that's an excellent point, and we should make sure that. We understand what these detours are and how it may or may not affect people who are waiting for the bus. Very important, um, you don't want to be out there at six in the morning in the winter waiting for a bus that doesn't come. Um, that's not good, um, we need to make sure that we can um, address that in any way we can. I will say, because I live on the corner of Nahat and Ocean Street, that. I, and I sit right by my window every morning, I start at five thirty, six in the morning reading the paper. And the bus comes by every morning, um, I don't know what's being detoured down on the. On the south side on Willow Road, but um, it does come by my house, so. It's getting past Emerald and Valley Road somehow.
That may be for the, the morning commute, but uh, my, my coworker works an evening shift at Kettle Cuisine, so he takes like the three o'clock. He takes the two thirty bus.
Yeah.
And so this afternoon, he had to run all the way over to by, to, to that, uh, the Y intersection down from Enzo's.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, uh, Brendan, uh, Tony, we need to try to address that, I mean, it's. We don't have a lot of.
Yeah, I was trying to think.
Um, um, I don't know if the police can assist or something, if, I mean. Yeah, we know what time the buses are coming, uh, I don't know how to address it, but. I can see how someone could be very frustrated with that.
All right, thank you for looking into it.
Yeah, thanks, Brendan.
Uh, next one says iPhone five.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, it's Debbie Vander Slice at three sixty-eight Nahat Road. I have a question, it's kind of related to what the first gentleman, I don't know his last name, but the person named Tom was talking about. Relevant to that house guard housing, and that is when we voted to approve. Giving the selectmen the right to sell the lots. I thought there was discussion about doing some special zoning, so people couldn't build McMansions or whatever. And um, I was just wondering if there's going to be any zoning by law changes for that part of town. Because I thought that if there's zoning by law changes, then they need to be approved at town meeting. In which case, they probably are going to need an article. I may be off base on this, but anyway, I wanted to raise the question.
Yeah, Dan, I'll let, uh, you know, Tony, um, you can both take this, but, um, Deb, what will happen? There were these, there were restrictions that were placed under the town meeting vote in terms of setbacks, boy or ratio. Um, and a number of those types of things. Those, uh, those restrictions will not necessarily be placed in terms of a, um, by law. Like more as a, um, as a deed restriction in the sale of the property. Um, Dan and Tony, you can elaborate on that if you want, want.
No, that's right, the, the called restrictive covenants in a deed. Zoning was never part of the discussion. Uh, in fact, zoning, you, you can't spot zone, which, which is sort of what this might be, so there, there's no discussion regarding zoning. It was a matter of just restricting the, um, the use and the purchasing of the, um, side by side lots. So they don't merge together and create a spot where you could potentially have a McMansion like we have in Little Nahat.
So the terms of the sale, so if you were to buy one of those lots from the town. There would be terms and conditions under that sale that will restrict you from doing what was voted on by the town. At the, yeah, twenty twenty-one town meeting.
And it's in the, and it's in the deed.
As, yes, as well as it will be in the deed, so the town meeting, instead of going by way of a zoning. Uh, restriction, it went through a deed restriction process and that is twenty-five percent floor area ratio. The, the properties, uh, average around ten thousand square feet. So, uh, the max size home is going to be twenty-five hundred square feet.
Oh, okay.
Footprint, right, Tony?
Yeah, yeah, and that, and that's, again, it's dependent on the size of a lot, I think there's some lot, you know, one lot might be closer to eleven thousand square feet. Where the others are closer to ten, but it's right in that, in that wheelhouse.
The minimum is ten, at least ten thousand square feet.
Hmm.
And I think the standard zoning is forty-five percent of your, of the land area, right? So a significantly smaller percentage of the land area is allowed for the footprint of the, on those deeds.
So the people that will be bidding on these lots then will be made aware of those deed restrictions, obviously, before they start making offers?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Michelle Capano, twenty-nine Ocean Street, um, a comment and a question, um, excuse me. So first, I wanted to acknowledge Lynn Spencer, Chair of the CPC for the job that she does, and she's been doing this for many years. And just li- listening in to the update that you gave tonight, Tony, really was awe inspiring. For the amount of money that's been reinvested back into the community. So Lynn and her team did a fantastic job. If you have an opportunity, just sit and listen on her meetings. And the Q and A that they go through to try to figure out, you know, all of these grants and right-size them for the needs of the town. The second one is a question on the I and I work down at, uh, Lowlands. Lowlands is getting a lot of attention and it's great and we need to remediate the, the issues and the risks down there. My question is, if I heard correctly, we received a million dollar grant through the federal government for the work to remediate the issues down there?
There's this contract for these, for this scope of work related to sewer, sewer repairs, not stormwater, uh, was, is a little bit less than a million dollars. And it, and it goes, we posted a picture on Facebook the other day, uh, it's not just the Lowlands area. Um, it's Nahat Road from Little Nahat, uh, into the Lowlands area, down Castle Road and kinda uh, up Harbor View or, um, yeah, up Harbor View, uh, down Fox Hill Road. And then there's also a lot happening on Emerald, Valley, uh, Pond, Ocean, Willow and that, and White Way.
Okay. And then I heard you say as part of the grant, um, process, they wanted to promote the uh, funding that was appropriated for this work. I guess my question is, was a building permit taken out for that sign? Because it would be a requirement for a sign, a sign like that. In the contract, it would have had to apply for a building permit.
I don't know if that's true. I can tell you, no, it was, you know, building permit was not required to, uh, was not pulled for that. I don't know if it would be required. Um, it's a requirement of the grant to have a sign promoting the funding source of the grant. Um.
Guess my point is, and certainly we can take this offline, is that we're happy to receive the funds, we're happy to promote the work and we're certainly happy to comply with the grant. But if our zoning requirements take, have an additional step for a, a large sign requires a building permit and not following that process is disadvantage to any other community group that promotes an activity who has to go and apply for a building permit. So something to consider. Um, and it would be appropriate to try to just remediate that in the future.
I think, um, you know, I will have to revisit that, Michelle. Um, I do have a vague memory of fine regulations in our bylaws. I'm not quite sure it's part of our building code, um, requirements or permitting requirements. There is, there are provisions, I think, in our bylaws regulating the size of signs and the location of signs. Um.
Yeah. So I recall that as well. And I remember that the, um, American Legion went through a process to go through building and get ZBA approval for the sign on the property over there. So, you know, I don't know the exact measurements. It looks as large or as large as that sign. So that's why it stuck out to me to say, hmm, why wasn't, you know, if building permit was taken out, maybe some of the other issues around the location would have also, uh, been addressed.
I'm not sure they went through the zoning board. I don't think that required a, a zoning board, um, requirement. I think it went through the planning board, but not.
I thought that I, it was like a special permit mark at something, at some point. I thought ZBA had to cover off on it, but
Okay.
that's separate from this, but just.
It, that's permanent, that's a permanent sign versus temporary sign during the, you know, during your grant process. So I think that might make a difference if it's permanent or temporary.
True. Okay. So that's my feedback, but thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Anybody else? We do have exec- executive sessions attend too.
Yep.
Um, I can make a motion if you'd like, Mr. Chairman. All right.
Go ahead.
I move, I move that the board of selectmen vote to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Paragraph 21A3, to discuss pending litigation strategy regarding County of Nahat versus three Coast Guard housing tenants, if the chair and, excuse me. If the chair in and in accordance with uh, I feel like there's a typo here. Um, oh yeah, so I think there's a, a cut and paste error here, but, um, uh, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effects on the negotiating position of the public body, do you declare that, Mr. Chairman?
I declare, I, I do declare that the, uh, uh, the open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating positions of the public body.
Um, and we will not, we will not return to an open session.
Second is.
Second is. A discussion on the margin. Do you hear me that? All favor?
King, can't the eye?
Josh, Andrew, my.
My, all right.
All right. Bye.
Be right back, guys.